I'm going to see you for tomorrow. Thank you.
Okay, we're good.
We ready to go?
Yeah.
North Smithville Town Council, June 21st, 2021. Madam Clerk, will you lead us to the prayer and the pledge, please?
Yes. Lord, assisted by Holy Spirit of Council, all those who are serving in positions of authority and responsibility, I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call.
Mattel, Mr. Carvall.
Here.
This is O'Hara.
Here.
Mr. Vadney.
Here.
Your god.
Here. Open forum pursuant to General Law 42 dash 46 dash six. CJ, is there anybody out there that would be interested in being heard during open forum? I just wanted to point out, though, if anybody does want to be heard during open forum, we, there is a, we are continuing the public hearing on the budget a little more down the agenda. So if you're commenting on the budget, if you could just please hold off. Otherwise, you're welcome to comment on any other topic. CJ, do we have anybody that wants to be heard?
Mr. President, I do not see anybody on, on video or raising their hand. Just give it a second, if you would please, just to... Ms. Oger, are we, are you hearing us okay?
Yeah, I can hear you guys.
I'm sorry, you say it again?
Yeah, I can hear you guys. Can you guys hear me?
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, so nobody wants to be, come up before we perform at this time?
Correct.
Okay, let's move on. Discussion about a lot of other action on payment of bills. Does anyone have any question regarding payment of bills at this time? Nobody here, is everyone here? So, Mr. Heskey, sort of, like? Okay, do we have a motion to approve?
Need to make a motion to approve the payment bills dated 6/21/2021 in a total amount of $3,302,800,20%.
That's, we have a motion, we have a second. Thank you. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Mattel?
Yes.
Mr. Carvall?
Yes.
Mrs. O'Hara?
Yes.
Mr. Vadney?
Yes.
Mr. Your god.
Yes. Discussion by council about other action on consent agenda. All items listed in this section are considered in one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless the council has some requests, in which event the item will be removed from the consent agenda. Would anybody like any items removed from the consent agenda for discussion before we approve?
Mr. President, I ask that the townhouse minutes may be approved, June 17th, be excluded from the consent agenda.
Make the same motion? Anybody else have anything else? Okay, we have a motion to approve the consent agenda with minus the, the meeting minutes for May 17th, 2021. We have a motion, is there a second? Discussion? Roll call, please.
Mattel?
Yes.
Mr. Carvall?
Yes.
Mrs. O'Hara? Mr. Vadney?
Yes. Yes, Ms. Vadney?
On day seventeen, the minutes on day seventeen, page two, at the top of the mobile food drops. We did vote on that, but it does not show record vote, and vote that vote was taken. I know that we voted on it to, to authorize it. I'm not sure what the vote was. I need to go back and look at the video.
I cannot. I have it in my notes.
If we could just update it, so I would request that we table, table these minutes until, since we don't know what we're going to amend it to be.
Anybody else on this one?
Ms. Vadney, was that it?
Before we move on, I have to talk to the seventy as well. If you look, where it says municipal building review task force, Mr. Your god commented that people will be the ones deciding. I believe that. I think it said voters. We could just, my turn. Thank you. Do you have another one, Ms. Vadney?
No, that was it.
Motion to approve the, yes.
If I may?
Yes.
Just a minor typo on June 7th. On the motion that says, oh, op, op, e, b, typo, op, e, p, that's respectful, op, e, b. Minor.
Okay, we made that change, right? Good pickup.
Also on June 7th. Right, right below that, for the, now, it was a motion, Mr. Your god, second, like, I saw it to continue the public hearing in June 14th, and to also the schedule continuation in June 28th, 29th. We actually, the motion was to set those dates to set the budget, Tuesday, it's not that continuing the public hearing.
Okay.
Okay, then that.
Let's get, I put the schedule continuation to June 28th, 29th.
Yeah, we scheduled those meetings to set, actually set the margin.
Okay.
Anything else? Okay, motion to approve the items removed from consent agenda as amended? Is there a second? Is there a second? Any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Mattel?
Yes.
Mr. Carvall?
Yes.
O'Hara? Mr. Vadney?
Yes. Yes. Open this, discussion by council about other action on update of municipal building review task force. Is there Mr. Nordstrom on, on with us tonight? CJ?
I did not see him on, Mr. President, but let me, uh, go through the, uh, the waiting list, or the, uh, the participant list. Uh, you do not see, unless he's an iPhone or an iPad.
Okay, Ms. Vadney, do you want to take it?
Yeah, we've been, we've been meeting almost every other week. We meet in the police station, we've been meeting with them. They've gone over a, a program use, and then they've taken that program use to, to, to be test fit to see how it would fit into a building, and what size of building it would be, and then come further, take those test fits, and see how they sit on, on the site, using the existing building or somewhere else on that lot. So we're going through that process. Last week, they gave us some renderings of what the outside of the building looked like, and they take feedback from the committee. We didn't really like the door that they gave us. We gave them some ideas. Both the chief and members of the committee, we gave them ideas of what we thought we wanted to see. And they were in the process of revising that, meeting this Thursday. We'll continue to discuss that, and everything is still on, on track to get a final report in July.
Excellent. Anybody have any questions, Ms. Vadney? Thank you. Discussion by council about other action on update of Hallway Review Committee. Mr. Carvall, do you have anything for us tonight?
I do, actually, really quick, just two updates. The bulk of the meeting this past Thursday, we had Weston Sampson visit us virtually, and we discussed the published address, the format of that, or the forum that's due to take place on July 24th. And then the second is, we did have a general appointment resign. So we will be opening that up, um, in the not-too-distant future for residents to apply for that order.
Okay, thank you. Madam Clerk, could you, please, take sure that's on the news, the next newsletter, the opening for the Hallway Review Committee? Be interesting to see who applies.
Mr. President, would you like to review those that may have applied previously? Good job to them. There, there is, there may be a couple that have applied.
Yeah, that'd be great.
Okay.
Thank you. Discussion by council about other action on proposed amendment on code ordinances, section six, six dash four, purchasing in competitive bid procedure. We already had the first reading, and this is the second reading. Mr. Zilinski, can you just bring yourself a date on this?
As Mr. President, Solicitor, you're on iPhone, is he able to?
I am, Mr. President, I'm here as well. I could fill the council if you want.
So, this morning, I had a conversation, earlier this morning, I had a conversation with Mr. Gliosi about this, and Solicitor, are you still of the opinion we should just read this tonight and carry it forward to, uh, to a further date?
Right, uh, Mr. President, Mr. Administrator, my recommendation is, there is a substitute amendment in your package. I would ask the council to vote to substitute the, um, the sub, a substitute, to adopt the substitute amendment as a first reading for tonight, and then reassign it for a second reading and final approval.
Uh, Mr. Solicitor, I, there's any chambers, I can barely hear you. Would you mind repeating that?
Yes, there is a substitute amendment to 6.4 in your packet. I would ask the council to adopt the substitute amendment that is in your packet for first reading tonight, and then assign it for a second reading at the next meeting. Could you hear me?
Yes. As, as President, by name, the council envelops, we do have meetings in June 28th, 29th, where this could be accepted, and that wouldn't take much time if the council's comfortable.
Yeah, we can do that for us, if the meeting gets out of the way, and if you can make it for the 28th, just in case, we don't end up having a meeting on 29th. Yes. So, uh, I'll make a motion to adopt the substitute amendment as a first reading at this time. At, the one that's presented to us will be the amended, amended document, and this is going to be the substitute for the first reading. That's a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? I mean, you can also assign, uh, what, what, the, what eighteenth, you said?
Twenty eighth, Mr. President.
Twenty eighth for the, uh, twenty, twenty eighth for the second reading.
Uh, yeah, and, and, that's all. Okay, correct.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Mattel?
Yes.
Mr. Carvall?
Yes.
Mrs. O'Hara?
Yes.
Mr. Vadney?
Yes.
Mr. Your god.
Yes. Discussion by council about other action and recommendation from Sewer Commission to approve payment to write P S for update on towns facilities plan. Mr. Dory, are you with us tonight?
Uh, yes, sir, I am.
Give us a second, we're just going to turn up the volume a little bit.
Okay, can you hear me?
Okay, can you hear me?
I, I did hear you, but I didn't hear, I didn't hear the question.
Oh, there wasn't a question yet?
Oh, there wasn't a question yet.
I, I can't hear you. I, I believe that, uh, is, is Mr. Kravitz there today, tonight?
Is he here?
Yeah, I'm here, I'm here.
Yeah, he's on, Mr. Dory.
I, I believe, I believe that the, uh, I, I believe that in correspondence between, uh, more about the water and sewer coordinator and Mr. Kravitz today, that the developer may have asked for an additional two weeks to, uh, consider the, the, uh, the proposal to have them pay for potentially the, uh, the upgrade to our plans. I don't think they're on tonight, looking at the, uh, at the list of the people that are on. But it's up to the town council, obviously, if you want to, uh, continue this two weeks to give the developer some time to respond, um, to the thoughts of the council, or if you want to do something tonight, but I, just in the, for full transparency, that's what's been going on today.
Okay, I actually received a phone call today from the attorney developer. I don't know how we got my number, but he said, he asked if he could continue the media, he thought they were on the agenda for tonight, if he could continue with for, uh, a couple of weeks, and then asked if there's a possibility that they could, they, they want to have discussions with us in executive session. And that's something that we would have to, uh, talk to the solicitor about, and give them an opportunity. Maybe they want to discuss this very, this very topic, fine.
As President, by name, uh, in looking at the correspondence we received, unless the Sewer Commission has met and approved the minutes, we're looking at draft minutes. So, uh, two-week hiatus may not be a bad idea to get the minutes approved, or when another next, uh, Sewer Commissioner, Commission needs to approve their minutes of, uh, May 27th. All right, so we'll get to you in a couple of weeks.
You want on the 20th?
No, we're already okay.
Okay.
So what's that?
It's 19th of July, right? Nineteenth of July, the next year?
Yes.
At the day of the June?
Yes.
July 19th is the first meeting.
Okay, yeah, so, Mr. Dory, that'll be July 19th.
So, so, sir, if you're looking to have approved, uh, meeting minutes from the Sewer Commission, our next meeting is July 21st. We were not able to meet last time because we weren't, we didn't have a quorum, so we have not officially approved those minutes at this time.
All right, so we'll have to move it up to the next one, that would be August. August 2nd, it looks like, right? Would that work, Mr. Dory?
Uh, that, that'll work for me, and we'll, uh, we'll get those minutes approved for you, sir.
All right, thank you.
You're welcome.
Moving on, North Smithville Town Council, sitting as the board of licensed commissions, discussion by council about other action on holiday license Keystone novelties. Sixty Eddie Dolling Highway, which is Park Square, Wine and Liquor, which is right inside of Burger King, and 900 Victory Highway, which is Slade Circle. Move, uh, go to sixty eighty dollar highway first. Does anybody have any, uh, any questions or comments regarding this application?
There's all, all the sign-offs from all the, all the right people. I just have an issue in the placement of that, at that, at that address. Between the size of the parking lot and location, and fireworks, and the liquor store in the same location, I'm a little hesitant about that.
Alcohol and fireworks were possibly the goal.
Who knows? Um, I, I believe they tried, they've done this in the past, but it, it just didn't work. That location doesn't work. Between the parking, I mean, if, if, if you go by there later in the day, like after six o'clock, that parking lot is full, just them doing their regular business, without having fireworks sent in that parking lot.
What can you do, what can you do further down? So say, could you do it like in the?
They tell him, they've done him the job lot parking lot in the past. But the last two times has been over here, they had a tent or something else over there too, and it, and it got shut down because it, something wasn't proper, or something, and they, and they closed it. When the pandemic has started, they were doing something there. It wasn't, it wasn't right, or something, and it, and it didn't get approved. I'm not against getting licensed, everybody signed up on it. I just, I'm not in favor of this, this location.
That's about the point. So, like I said, we'll just one at a time, so, uh, so, anybody else have any comments about this?
I agree. Same one. Not good, but, except for traffic coming out, and when you don't know, it's going to commence to that part, and we might go on out, so.
Okay.
Let's take.
Okay, so, uh, let's, uh, let's do the first, do, do we have a history of, of this particular group, where they had locations and other locations? Is this the one you're referring to, Jim?
I don't know if it's the same ones. I mean, if it was, I mean, it has been in private years, right, on the job lot, I'm not sure.
Yeah, and, and I agree too. I mean, even just driving by, anytime after five or six, six o'clock, no matter what day of the week, parking is a, is a bear in there anyway, so. I just, you know, for people just to stop in, I, I think it's going to be a lighter, people getting in and out. I, I don't know if it's an issue that other businesses are, they're renting space for a tent. It's been in different places, it's been in Walmart parking lot, it's been in, um, across the street, at the, at the Little Plaza there, where the restaurant is on, is on the second, in the basement. It's been, it's been in one socket on the corner of that job lot parking lot. It's been a number of places, but this, this is a problematic spot, personally. We haven't had any issue with Keystone. I want to reiterate that. We haven't, the company itself, we haven't had any issue with, with the tents in other places, we haven't had issues with that. This is based solely on location, location.
Okay. So we will, uh, do one, do one at a time, so, uh, for the first location, sixty Eddie Dolling Highway, that is the liquor store on, uh, is there a motion to approve this application? Want, want to go one more shot in time? Is there a motion to approve the application sixty Eddie Dolling Highway? For the fireworks. Okay, that's going to die for lack of a motion. Let's move on to the next location, it's 900 Victory Highway, which is the Slade Circle Plaza. Once again, I think all the paperwork is in order, just like the first one, and...
Mr. President, based on having all the proper sign-offs on this, on this, um, area for rental, I make a motion that we approve the license Holiday License for Keystone Novelties at 900 Victory Highway.
With a motion and a second, any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Mattel?
Yes.
Mr. Carvall?
Yes.
O'Hara? Mr. Vadney?
Yes.
Your god.
Yes. Discussion by council about other action I request for outdoor sun permit, next call is Kasha, North Smithville Middle School, July 25th, 2021, from 10:00, 10:00 A.M. to 2:00 P.M. And your packet is a letter from Councilman Vadney requesting, uh, with details. Ms. Vadney, anything you want to discuss about this?
Um, this, this will be the second year we do it. We've been doing it for eight, this will be our eighth year, but we didn't do it last year because everything was shut down, so it's actually now seven years. Um, and you have all the approvals from the school department to use that facility. We've been putting it together, and so along, now that things are opening up, we've been, we've been trying to move it forward. Um, this is just one piece, you know, one piece of puzzle. And so we're asking that we, we, we have a DJ come, Christian Bruce comes, and says that's amusing. We probably get 150, 160 cars that show up, and they show up, and probably 300, 400 people won't show up to see it, so. It's a, it's a good fundraiser for us, and we give out a thousand dollars scholarship every year to a high school student. This is how we do it.
Mr. President?
Ms. Adams?
To make a motion to approve the outdoor sound permit request from the next one, Kasha, with North Smithville Middle School on July 25th, from 10:00 A.M. to 2:00 P.M.
Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Mattel?
Yes.
Mr. Carvall?
Yes.
Mrs. O'Hara?
Yeah.
Mr. Vadney?
I'm going to understand.
Mr. Your god.
Yes.
Thank you. Thank you, good job.
Okay, uh, discussion by council about other action and what for request qualifications to Stantec rehabilitation on Comstock Water Tank and other water improvements, the Slade Circle Water District. I know that this is something that the administrators weren't very, very hot on lately. This is, let's get, could you give us an update on this?
Yeah, I'll give you a brief background, and of course, Tom, playing the, Tom Kravitz has had very instrumental pockets. So as, as we're all aware, the Comstock tank supplies water to 3,000 residents a day, 396 residents, excuse me, 300, 3,000 recipients a day, 396 residential customers, 63 commercial customers. Uh, we have some minor deficiencies over there, going back to 2017, 19, this could be corrected, uh, but it's at a hefty price. Well, I mean, I can keep going, but I would like Mr. Kravitz to explain the process, what he's going through so far, he's taken a lead on this. As anyone knows, goes upstairs on the second floor, it's in a little command center to address that, and also take down, potentially, take down the Comstock, the first tank that's up there, Rusty. Take down Countryway and Ridge, the green tank. We have some concerns, hopefully we'll have some revenue coming in from, um, cell phone towers, but, uh, Mr. Kravitz gives more detail on it. Tom, you ready?
Yeah. Everyone hear me okay?
We can hear you.
Okay. Yeah, so Paul described it pretty well, um, and what we want to do is engage an engineering firm here, uh, that can take us through the design, uh, the specifications, and the proper bidding, uh, to execute, you know, the rehab of the tank, and hopefully the demolition of the two tanks Paul just mentioned. The refined scope of work, we did, we did approach Stantec, um, to try to drill down more specifically with a refined scope, so they did meet with Russ, and that's why they're able to give us this detail that you have, um, in the, in your packet. And what we want to do next is, is first get the council's authorization to go with Stantec for this RFQ, and then we can have them put hard numbers to this effort, and even try to phase it out such that we're not, you know, we can meter out the expenses. I think we want to tackle what Department of Health wants us to tackle first, which is the tank, for sure. Hopefully demoing the two existing tanks, and then there's some, um, booster pump work that Russ would like to have done, that will help the flow, um, when he has to isolate the system for industrial drive, so. And, and what we want to do, I think, and this is important, is we want to try to work with Stantec soon here, to get, to get us going, so we can begin to bid this thing and understand what the real costs are going to be, so we'll be ready in the starting blocks when we get, hopefully, the COVID money. So a lot of this, pretty much, a, a substantial amount, we want to get funded through that effort, including the, um, the design work as well. So we, we actually put in for the legislative earmark, we put in for the design money, which is effectively what we would be paying Stantec, so that's, that's kind of the long and short of it, if anyone has any questions.
Do you have any questions, Mr. Kravitz? Do you know, do we know what the cost is?
I mean, I, I have an informal number, yeah, I do. You know, uh, I kind of don't want to say, I'd like to, I'd like to really bid it first, to be honest. You, you will see.
You mean this cost of Stantec, you don't mean the cost of the fixed tank, right?
Right, yes.
Yeah, he's not talking about the cost of the fixed tank, he means the cost for the...
Yeah, I, I can, okay, I can safely say between two and three hundred thousand. And that again will be phased, as best we can phase.
Yeah. So, uh, Mr. Badney, you're asking what, uh, we have to go up the bid to see what the cost would be to, uh, repair the tank, but right now we're going out to get a request for qualifications. We don't know. Let's do, do the engineering work. Yeah, I understand. Yeah, we do have quotes from a company called Suez. They're outdated. So, uh, they're hopefully outdated. So that, that's what Tom might correct my analysis.
Y-yes, you're correct. They're outdated, but they're also, they were under. Yeah, they were, they were low.
So we don't have a price for Stantec, which I just do this, yeah. Does it come out at the end of the price plan? Yes. So all, all the repay is all what are you, to be, however, it can be reason for us if we get the COVID money to come back, go back into the, to the, to the, that would be, that would be a good thing for us. Uh, excellent. This is just upfront costs and costs of go back.
I can say though, uh, folks, that we will know those numbers. If, if you allow us to engage Stantec, we can ask them to put estimates to this scope of work.
Mr. President, just, uh, just to, uh, remind everyone, make sure, I mean, we, I know we have an echo, but just make sure we use our microphones. So.
Okay. Does anybody have any other questions on this? Okay, uh, so moving from motion then to, uh, approve, uh, the, uh, action for the award for a request for qualifications, Stantec rehabilitation, Comstock water tank and other improvements.
Make a motion that we go forward with the request of qualifications to Stantec rehabilitation for a Comstock water tank.
And it's a motion. Do we have a second? And a second. Roll call please.
Ms. House?
Yes.
Mr. Carver?
Yes.
Mr. O'Hara?
Yeah.
Mr. Badney?
Yes.
We are done.
Yes. Moving on, uh, for the next agenda item, I will have to abstain, I will recuse myself because, uh, that is a customer that I regularly do business with.
Next, right, this discussion by council board on action on award Elizabeth Avenue Cistern, bid to Adler Brothers Construction. Mr. Kravitz again, please.
Yes, this, um, as you, as you may know, um, the Elizabeth Avenue Cistern was discovered to be losing water. Uh, the fire department will periodically fill the cistern and check on it. And this was several years back now. Um, they noticed it was losing water. So we, we engaged the company to do an investigative, uh, an investigation on the tank. That was E J Prescott. So they came, met us there and they literally loaded a, a man in the cistern. It was found to be, have a water depth inside of it of only about seven, eight inches. This is a ten thousand gallon fiberglass cistern. So it's, it's a, it's a pretty big tank. It's probably a, it's probably a ten by, ten by twenty, uh, tank underground. It's currently located, um, on two residential properties on Elizabeth Avenue. The investigation, which you, actually it was in your packet. So you would have seen the photos and everything. It's got about a three quarter inch crack in it around the whole, uh, end of it. And it's kind of a, an egg shaped ending, um, and this water, groundwater pouring into the tank. So we, uh, then took that information that was, that, that gave us confirmation. We knew what was wrong with it. Okay. So then we bid the project and we got two bids back. Um, Adler Brothers was the low bid, uh, by about a hundred thousand, actually. And so, um, we're looking to award the project to them. The other thing that's important here, there's two options essentially. When you look at your spreadsheet, there was, uh, option one, two, and it actually said option three, but option three was technically the cost of the cistern, which we wanted to call that out. So the cost of that cistern in Adler's bid was thirty five thousand, six hundred. So his low number, um, of one nineteen, uh, is technically a low of one fifty five. Okay, hundred fifty five thousand. The other option is to, uh, that, that's the low number because that would entail putting the cistern in a different location across the street that happens to be a residential property with a, a side yard that's large enough to accommodate it. And it doesn't have the obstacles and the challenges of putting the tank, uh, replacing it in kind in its existing location. I've, I've spoken with the neighbor. Um, she wasn't crazy about it, but I told her that I didn't want to even bid it without talking to her first and she appreciated that. And I said, if the numbers, depending on what they come back with, it's not uncommon to compensate a landowner for an easement. Now, if the town can still, so we're looking at a delta of twelve thousand, seventy eight dollars. That's not a big delta, but, uh, if a small percentage of that goes to an easement payment, maybe the town could still save, uh, some money. And so I'm here to present this to you and ask the council what you, uh, what you'd like to do. I'd like to, I'd like to ask that you award it to Adler and then, um, maybe perhaps you can, uh, let me go back and I'm the messenger here. You tell me what you want me to talk to the neighbor. If you want to try to put it in her property, the town could potentially save some money, not a lot of money, but that's, that's our options. Otherwise, we, we extricate the cistern in its current location. There's overhead power lines going to one of the homes. Both homes have underground sprinkler systems. Both homes have landscaping. One home has an underground a dog fence thing, you know, that your dog doesn't run out in the street. So that's why that one is more expensive to, to replace in kind. So I, at the request of the neighbor, this is a good idea to at least approach the neighbor and, and this is what we're, we're faced with. That's all I got.
So maybe the funds from this is the scalpel or?
Yeah.
Yeah.
We have a little more than fifty thousand for this project, but the remainder, we're going to try to take it from the money that we're getting through COVID. The difference, I'm sorry, I should say.
Yeah, Cynthia is correct there because it, it clearly is water infrastructure. You know, if you had water lines, you wouldn't need a cistern. So.
All the money is acceptable with, um, any sewer or water infrastructure. So that's something to come back to you on and once we get the funds to be able to use it to supplement for this project.
That's still an unknown, correct?
Excuse me?
That's still an unknown.
Um, I, I received the final number. So and they're saying we're going to receive it the second week of July. Half of it. So.
Tom, I have a, I have a quick question for you. Um, you know, now looking at both of the, all of the, the bids, there's a significant swing between Adler and Boyle already. Um, if there's an issue uh, replacing and doing the install, uh, is this, is this amount fixed in cost?
You know, my experience with this type of project based on its scale, it's something that a larger firm is just going to throw a high number at. And if they get it, great. It's, it's the kind of project to replace a ten thousand gallon cistern tank. It's not like it's, um, it's, it's small potatoes for the bigger companies, but yet the smaller construction firms are dicey because you want to make sure it's done properly. Um, Adler is a, is a firm that's kind of the perfect size for it. Um, they did help us with bringing in E J P, went to analyze it. So they know it intimately. That probably was part of their number. But I, I do want to say that for, when I talked to Scott Adler, for an extra ten thousand dollars, they can get a different cistern company where that, that company will actually send a rep out and be there to witness the construction and, and the installation and they'll warranty the tank much better than the other company would. He went with the lower number for the cistern just because of the sake of trying to get the bid, but he said, I do want to be upfront that if you get this, if, if the council goes for it for an extra ten thousand, we can use a, a company, I guess, that's more local to New England for the cisterns and they'll, they're more hands on and they'll, they'll work with him. So I hope that answers, uh, your question. We only did get two responses and I reached out to several firms too, um, construction companies.
That additional ten thousand, all that a project manager is not in this scope?
Correct. It's not in the scope. That was a verbal from, from Adler. But I don't want you to be surprised if, let's say you did go with Adler, that I, you know what I mean? I'm approaching it with a, this option for a better, uh, cistern. You know, the other, oh, sorry. The other thing I was going to say again, as far as the neighbor, this is a matter of if, if, if you'd like it, uh, placed across the street to save money, I can pursue a conversation and get something, you know, in writing from the neighbor. That's, in either case, what we found out is, um, we'd have to of course hire a surveyor to create an easement, you know, to put this thing in. The existing cistern where it is now, it wasn't placed in the right place. So the, the easement runs parallel to Elizabeth Avenue, but the cistern runs perpendicular to the street. So that actually has to be corrected as well. So I've got to spend, it's going to be a couple thousand dollars. It's not a big number, but I do have to do survey work for either situation. So.
Mr. President, based on, based on a report that we had done by E J Prescott, that tank wasn't even installed properly, which is what's creating our problem today. And this goes back to the issue that we were dealing with, with the sewer system is that we have these developers that come in and we're supposed to have peer review engineers to review and check this stuff to make sure it's done right. We've had issues with the roads out there, manhole covers, uh, the cistern has failed and we're holding the bag on it to the tune of a hundred and sixty thousand dollars. You know, that's, that's the kind of things we're facing because nobody watched what he was doing and how he was doing it. They just put it in and, and with a high water table in that area, which has been documented, now you have water that freezes, pushed it in the crack of the tank. And so now we're looking at fixing this because it wasn't done properly the first time.
Mr. Badney's point, I must say, I looked through a lot of paperwork on this and he's right. I found all the inspections for the sewer. There's, there's ledge all over the place up there and I don't think it was properly bedded. Uh, the first person I contacted and I've been in contact with was Mr. Mezalela about this project that he did and he was not the installer, um, nor did he own the property at the time, he claims. So uh, I'm very well aware of that. Um, and, uh, we're retaining the bond for Graves Avenue. Graves Avenue is going to need a cistern as well and there's already been a request for bond reduction and I'm not granting it, not until we, not until I ensure that this one is, uh, well, this one has nothing to do with it, but when they do the Graves Avenue one, it will be over, it will be, there will be oversight for sure with peer review and the manufacturer. But yeah, this happened. I, I'm estimating that the system was put in place somewhere, I think around two thousand either four or seven. I looked up the plan where the easement popped up. It was in the, in the mid two thousands.
The bottom line is this is a safe region. There's no fire protection in that area. The system is dry. The other is, is so there's no way to repair this one again to, uh, stress out the system itself. So what they did was they backed up, so according to their report, they backfilled with the needed material that was there. Should have, and he still, the material settles, he still wanted it most securely. We don't know, well, I have an idea of what installed it. But I don't believe anybody was there to observe the actual installation.
To get into the specifics, just so you know, um, we did pressure test the existing, uh, fill pipe to the existing cistern. Yeah, there was a large crack in it, but we were able to plug the area where the water comes in and we pressure tested the line and the line passed. Just to confirm, it, it is obviously the crack and there's no other leak in it as far as air pressure.
You, when I go and submit it, but it's going to get pushed back up in five months. So are we just approving? Are we sort of proving, uh, the award of the bid and, uh, which option we choose at this point?
Correct.
I'm going to think we're choosing. I think we have to choose which action everyone will want. But if I remember correctly, uh, Planner Kravitz said that he's going to reach out to the auction across the street, which may save us more money in the long run, uh, as far as underground sprinkler systems, uh, door wiring systems, uh, and then possibly a small stipend to the homeowner for putting it there. So that's, uh, I, I think you could, David, David's on the line, but I'm, I'm assuming that the council would be able to make a recommendation to leave this to Mr. Kravitz to see if you can get the, the location across the street and then we could come back and approve that. It's a, it's a better location across the street than where it's currently. It's but if, if they resident across the street, we, we have a location. It's already excavated, easy removal, easy put in, you know, but, uh, uh, we have that option of letting the resident, uh, if they wish.
Part of option one is that we have to remove that tank as well. So not only do we have to move all those, you've got to dig the hole out and pull it all out and then put something back in. At this one, we can just fill that one in and dig a different hole.
Then you have to excavate it across the street. So I, if I may, uh, Tom, if you're there, if, if the council would make a decision to give you more time to speak with that, uh, property owner across the street before they make a decision on this.
That would, that, that will be, yeah, that'll be fine. If you could authorize me to, to have negotiations with the neighbor in order to pursue the lower price, I will do that.
Mr. President, I make a motion right now that, that we, we authorize the administration to contact the resident and his address while placing this system on the property, their property as opposed to removing it from the other one and then we'll be able to know better where we're going on this.
Is that motion?
Yes.
Is there a second?
Ms. House?
Yes.
Mr. Carver?
Yes.
Mr. O'Hara? Mr. Badney?
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you.
Discussion by council board on other action around the Department of Transportation posing to take responsibility for the ownership, maintenance and billing of certain streetlights located on state roads within the town of North Smithfield. Mr. Zolinski?
Mr. Preston, uh, communities in the state of Rhode Island have given wonderful opportunity. Uh, if they are in possession and paid for the installation of, uh, street lighting, LED models, which the town of North Smithfield has, uh, I don't know how many years ago, we received a three hundred fifty thousand dollar grant. We converted and purchased the lights from the grid. We have a company called Prism that maintains and they charge us thirty six hundred thousand, thirty six, thirty five, thirty six, thirty four, forty, uh, I like the wrong, thirty four, forty a month to maintain those lights. What, what Rhode Island Department of Transportation has found are proof that we had purchased and those lights are operational. They're going to assume all costs associated with four hundred and forty eight lights on state roads. This will be a, a great savings to the town. And, uh, so, uh, Bobby, myself, uh, Tom and Bobby, we kind of likes to verify, uh, we're pretty close. We're off a couple lights on each street. One, one we had more than they had and a couple streets we had, they had less, the state had less than what we had. So we received an Excel spreadsheet from Prism. That has to be juxtaposed next to our council. We'll make sure that the light count is proper. But right now we're looking at four hundred and forty eight, which we don't count on. So we can feed them over in the old rats to the state and they will assume, uh, the maintenance and all costs associated with it. So what we're looking for here is, uh, council to approve, uh, the insurance that contract once we verify the fact.
I make a motion that we, if we move forward, um, authorizing the administration to further pursue turning over all of those streetlights on streets, um, on state streets in down in North Smithfield to the Rhode Island Department of Transportation. Right now, we presently total storming forty eight lights. They would take over ownership, maintenance and cost of laying.
Right now, we presently told us four hundred and forty eight lights, they would take over ownership, maintenance and cost of labor.
Motion, if there are second. Any further discussion or questions?
Just under discussion, it's basically you look at the list and the road is that on the state or in our town. People don't realize how many streets belong to the town, like the state of New, Bridge Street, Main Street, Main Street, School Street. We rode some of the obvious ones, we moved road, obviously, they're the obvious ones, but there are a lot of streets, you look at that list that belong to the state. That runs throughout our town and so when people look to say, oh, we want sidewalks and some of those other issues, those are state issues, they're not even our roads. We would have to get approval from the state to do any work on them. And the map, the map really shows how they crystalized the town.
Is that right, you did?
Yeah, I reported because not part of the town when I grew up there. New people came in and they came talking about the condition of sidewalks, how dangerous they are. And the roads then are always so many times so black. You don't know, who's the sidewalk and who wants to grow? And uh. And other people have taken out the sidewalk for, you know, work. So who who we go to to address this? Do we ask someone to take this out or are they?
Is there any downside to this? On proving the streetlights? You know, just don't hand anyone with state for their responsibility, is there any downside to that?
No, 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 no downside. The upside is we're gonna save uh three hundred, uh, three thousand, four hundred something dollars a month for maintenance. As well as the electricity we use to uh to illuminate the lights, there's really no downside. It's very difficult to get service and we're gonna save your life. I I I believe what Mrs. O'Hara is referring to is the condition of some of the state sidewalks, which is not only agenda right to discuss, but I'll I'll be with Mrs. O'Hara, we we chalked right out of that. Because I know exactly what she's referring to. They will. But I I just made a comment that the number of roads that the state has in our town, it's it's people don't realize that.
Do you know kind of turn around tactically, you chose that streetlights out or how often will be regulated or looked at or?
Uh, no, but if they're up, we're under contract with Prism through the year before we we uh sign over to the state. So anyway, we'd say I, you know, that would take a long time, right, to go out, verify that all the lights are on, it's very difficult with trees that the lights are. We counted lights during the daytime and uh, you need to be, because one had a driving, if you pass trees, it's all a little more obscured by trees. A couple times you turned it off, went back and counted them again, so we have a very, very accurate. As far as them working at night, I'm very sure they will be, but if not, it'd be a matter of Prism having, correct?
But Prism will no longer have the responsibility?
No, no.
So I'm saying like once we pass them over to the state, do we know what kind of turnaround time it would be if one of those out or something?
Well, the state is going to have to maintain them, now whether the state stays with Prism or not is outside of my scope of uh. Research on that, the state's done, you know, I can't make a recommendation to the state for Prism, it's done a fine job maintaining not lights, I tell you that right now. Though, it's gonna be entirely at the state. Anything else? So, we had a motion, correct? And we have a second? So we'll look for a second. Second, oh, we have a second, okay, I apologize.
Who was the second?
It was the second, okay, I apologize.
I didn't hear you.
Is there any further discussion or questions? Here, roll call please.
Ms. Alves?
Yes.
Mr. Carvo?
Yes.
Mrs. O'Hara? Mr. Badme?
Yes.
Yes. Especially by council, what other action on abatements, Stasis?
Yes, this was the recommendation from the construction agency. For the last ten years, um, we never abated or adjusted taxes for taxpayers that were deceased. Oh, they did some research and received some death certificates for worse on taxpayers. And I'm asking the town council to approve a tax adjustment of six thousand four hundred eleven dollars and twenty two cents.
Anybody have any questions, Mr. Stasis?
Cynthia, I know I'm sending you out, we just going forward, we just have to give a date number, total of five, because. We should keep doing small amounts and everything, so can we just get a give a date number every time we have a discovery tally?
Absolutely, um, would you want it by own? This abatements that Jennifer does, the tax assessor, which is based on incorrect building. And then this abatements for collections such as deceased um and interest.
Can we combine them all?
You can, do you want it to show different categories or does it matter?
No, I just think if we can just see what the total abatement is and what we're approaching, because. And we do, we would, um, you know, we have no idea what we kind of went down or not, or.
So can we stop at July first with this meeting?
Go, go. I do, I'm sorry, you're gonna do it this way or?
This way, yes.
Thank you.
Did everybody receive that email that I sent?
Give us an idea when we look at the budget and moving in, or we should carry on the business. Any other questions? Uh, we need to motion it, uh, is there motion to approve the tax adjustment of six thousand four hundred forty one thousand twenty two cents?
It's because of that number, six thousand four hundred eleven thousand twenty two cents?
Who just texted that? Thank you.
I guess it matters.
Mr. President, I'm gonna do the next.
Roll call please.
Alves?
Yes.
Mr. Carvo?
Yes.
Mrs. O'Hara?
Yes.
Mr. Badme?
Yes.
Mr. Yerba?
Yes. Okay, before we adjourn, folks, we still have a continuation of the public hearing. Uh, from last week. Mr. President, we reown the public hearing on the proposed twenty one twenty two budget. It's a motion, so we have a second, we have a second and roll call.
Ms. Alves?
Yes.
Mr. Carvo?
Yes.
Mrs. O'Hara?
Yeah.
Mr. Badme?
Yes.
Mr. Yerba?
Yes. Uh, CJ, is there anybody out there that would like to be heard right now, so the uh. The uh, public hearing on the budget.
I do have a hand raised, Mr. Oger.
Mr. Oger, can you hear me?
Ken, can you guys hear me?
Yeah, you got you got the floor.
Awesome, I'll be brief, um, so at the end of the agenda. Um, but I first just wanted to say, um, you know, thanks, uh, I know the Budget Committee, I thought did a good job in terms of. It's a lot of work that goes into that and, you know, I applaud their efforts with creating the budget. Um, but I just had some things that I just wanted to to reference. First, I'm okay with funding the schools as a, it is a main reason why people move to North Smithfield. You know, it has a positive effect on property rates. And there's other positive um, things that come from it. But what I do worry about is that the town will continue to spend in excess in other areas. Uh, if a department had a surplus, for example, the prior year, um, hopefully we want to be spending above and beyond um, in the next year. And that I do think that the town should still continue to be conservative in its spending. Um, there are many still big ticket projects that are coming up in the near future, such as the police station in Halliwell. Um, and those projects alone could add millions of dollars in additional debt if fully financed. Uh, I'm not against any of those projects and I do think that they will add value. Um, but I'm just hoping that the town takes a longer term view and budgeting. Uh, for the current year or years, uh, especially with a lot of uncertainty still out there uh, in the world. Um, I'm also concerned as a resident about the loss of commercial property in the town. It just seems like every week I drive around and a new property is at off the lease a sale. Um, I know some of that might be related to COVID. Um, I know there was some properties before, like the Walgreens uh, over by Stop and Shop. Um, and it just kind of seems to sit there and so I was, I am worried that as a resident, um, more of that burden will continue to be shift to the taxpayer. Especially um, if we continue to spend uh, in the future. And it could eventually price families or individuals out in North Smithfield, um, and so I guess I'm just curious. I'm hoping at some point, uh, we'll hear what the town is looking to do to offset this. Um, because I know we're talking a lot about bringing in a potential redo of part of um. Branch Ave, going through that, uh, not Branch Ave, um, Branch Village and going through that process of, you know, reformatting the traffic pattern and all that. But I just wonder how we're gonna attract a new business uh, or a new commercial base if we can't keep the current one maintained. Uh, my next quick point was just, um, a couple of weeks back, uh, I asked, oh, I was, you know, curious as to if there was a way to see. Um, the prior year's budget, which was more broken out by line item. Um, if if the new budget could be broken out as well, because it looked like a lot of things were aggregated. Um, it just makes it hard to track, you're constantly trying to flip back and forth. Um, it just seems like it just is a step backwards in transparency. I know that things aren't gonna be one for one. I know that it's a new system online and it's just trying to figure out how some, what some of those numbers are as a as a resident. And uh, one thing I saw though was it was, it stood out pretty well was that it looked like the TC stipend was increasing from sixteen to twenty two point seven thousand. Um, that was the Budget Committee recommendation and that's nearly seven thousand dollars more than the prior fiscal year. You know, as a former councilman, that is something I would never, I would have rejected because I do think that that money could be put towards seniors, funding schools or open space. And I saw that Bervo just added a minibus for around thirteen thousand and was bringing it back and that's something I feel like the town could. Do something similar um, to provide transportation for those who need it with that money or there's other things we could do like um, fund the school, so. Um, that's it, just real quick, um, I hope everyone has a great evening.
Uh, hold on, Mr. Oger.
Yes.
Mr. Stasis, you want to comment on that?
Yes, um, so yeah, I put on the website a very detailed expense, detailed um, spreadsheet. I don't know if you saw it, it has every single account of it broken down, by explanation. Also, the line that has the tax, the um, the town council, if you look at that explanation, it's not just the town council stipends. There's also audio, video, um, budget in there. There's uh, the heritage associations in there. No, I'm sorry, yes, fighters included in there, all of the um, like NS food pantry, all of the um. Contributions that we do for other one source citizens in there, so the amount of that you're seeing is not just the town council stipends.
Okay, I did not see that. I looked under the FY twenty twenty two Budget Committee documents. Is it under a different section on the website?
Um, I'm not the one that put it on the website, it was jumping in, I'll ask for it in the morning and I.
Okay.
I'll send you an email, do you still have the same email address?
Yeah, I do, yeah, that'd be great, yeah, I I know that stuff gets placed in multiple spots, so.
Yes.
Just as.
It's a better visual, it has more transparency, gives you nine descriptions and it breaks down every single item.
Awesome, thank you so much.
Okay.
I think that's one point that we need to make is that this year's budget is reflected on a new chart of accounts to line up better with state reporting. And so we, you may change, we have, you may change and if you look at our budgets, yeah, it's it's difficult, it's broken down differently now than in Advent. But the new report does show how that breakdown does come out and it it is helpful, so. As long as it's on the website, if it's on our website and they can see it, you have no question. But people need to understand that, yes, it's uh, it's not the old budget ways, there's a new, there's a new chart of accounts. And so there's new new line item numbers that go along with everything. So to to line with state, state reporting, that's the bottom line to it.
The state, the state requires a, what they call this full transparency portal and um. Our municipalities have to have the same format. We don't have to, but to adjust and act at the end of the year and make it uniform on our audits with all thirty seven municipalities, did it make sense? So for us to just be compatible with the state charter accounts, it was just gonna be a lot so much easier at the end of the day. Especially since we have to change um. Account systems, anyways, it was just a perfect time to change the charter accounts.
Now we did, communities can compete to communities.
To communities, communities, and that's how.
It's the same, it's the same reporting.
And that's, that was the goal of the state to do.
Apples to apples. Next year, so much easier and then I think we'll all be adjusting to it.
One more.
Yeah, I I I want to compliment Cynthia, Cynthia and Darian spent a lot of time with the government. It's it's not an easy thing, I was on the school committee and they have a lot of child, child line items that we do. And we had to go through that process and, you know, North Smithfield was the first one back then to submit a school new charter accounts. So we we do do a good job as partners, people were in the state, both of them.
Well, like I must say, North Smithfield's been impressive in a number of things, such as switching over the LED lights and painting. Some some communities have been leasing to own, so they may have to scramble to meet the ride odds standards, but we're not in that. Okay, uh, CJ, is there anybody else out there that would be heard here in public forum between the public hearing?
No, don't see any hands up.
Okay, folks, uh, this is it, we're gonna close the public hearing on the on the budget and uh, this will be the last opportunity, so if anybody has anything they'd like to. Contribute, that would be the time. We're good? Okay, I'm going to state a motion to close the public hearing. Motion, is there a second? Roll call please.
Ms. Alves?
Yes.
Mr. Carvo?
Yes.
Mrs. O'Hara?
Yes.
Mr. Badme?
Yes.
Mr. Yerba?
Yes.
Before you, just remind them that next one day we set the budget, so. And now we can do my own.
Correct, yeah. So I will state a motion to adjourn at this time. All in favor?